Call this board meeting back to order. Counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Executive session, item one on the addendum, involves a proposed settlement in Kohl's Inc. versus Pima County, Arizona Tax Court case number TX 2020-945. County Attorney's Office seeks or recommends proceeding as discussed in executive session.
Move the county attorney's recommendation.
Motion, second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Ayes have it. Counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Executive session, item two on the addendum, involves City of Boca Raton, Florida and County of Palm Beach, Florida, in litigation in the United States Court of Appeals for the 11th Circuit, case number 19-01604. It involves a challenge to a ban on sexual orientation change efforts. County Attorney's Office seeks direction on whether to join an amicus brief supporting the City of Boca Raton and County of Palm Beach at no cost to the county.
Move to support an amicus brief in support of the City of Boca Raton, Florida and the County of Palm Beach, Florida.
I'll second.
Motion, second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay.
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 By your vote of three to two, motion carries. All right, Board of Supervisors, City and other boards, Flood Control District Board, item five and six.
Move the items.
Second.
Motion, second, to approve item five and six on the regular agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Miller.
I had some questions on agenda, item six, on the multi-species conservation plan.
We're in the middle of a vote.
Yeah, you didn't even get, I had to take my phone off mute to ask if I could divide the question, and you had already moved on before I could even do that.
I withdraw my motion.
All right, I'm going to rule the withdrawal is in order even though it's questionable?
I understand.
A second, or okay?
I'm okay.
All right. Supervisor Miller.
Well, I'm going to move item five now separately.
All right, we'll move item five. And there's no questions on that one, Supervisor Miller? Supervisor Miller?
Yeah. I'm here.
Okay, are there any questions on five?
Oh, no.
All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying-
I want my explanation.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Ayes have it. Item number six.
I'll move the item for purposes of discussion. I'll second.
All right, motion, second. Supervisor Miller.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to get some clarification, I think, from Mr. Huckleberry on this item. We have three different types of conservation land here. We have the county multi-species conservation plan, the flood district, flood control district multi-species conservation plan, and then county conservation lands that have been identified. So, I would like to ask Mr. Huckleberry if he could explain the difference between the three. I know some are for conservation, some are for mitigation, some are associated with the Section 10 permit.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Miller, there is one conservation plan, that's the snore and desert conservation plan, and there's components of it that actually qualify for an Endangered Species Act Section 10 permit. And the restrictive covenants require, arise from the requirement of the Section 10 permit to encumber lands for conservation purposes. So, there's really one plan. And then what happens is the flood control district contributes lands, and then the county itself has contributed lands. And acting as a flood control district, you contribute the lands that they have acquired that are primarily flood-prone and riparian. Acting as the county, you restrict lands that may have been acquired through open space acquisitions. The item appears twice in the agenda, and the item here is for the modifications to the covenants and restrictions for the flood control district lands. And where it appears later in the agenda is for the balance of the county properties that have been incumbent through the restrictive covenant. We're allowed to, from time to time, modify the lands that we have in conservation for reasons, or add other lands, as long as the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service agrees that it doesn't severely or impact our ability to continue with the Section 10 permit. This is what we're doing here. We're adding about 2,017 acres of lands, and we're taking out about 230 lands that had previously been restricted by previous actions. And we're making a modification to our management practices that allows us to perform maintenance in and on those flood control district lands that have been included in the restrictive covenant.
And my understanding is that these are all recorded on the particular deeds for the various properties, that they're to be preserved in perpetuity with this ability to go in periodically and evaluate. Is that correct?
Supervisor Miller, yes, that is correct.
Okay, and on the federal properties, they, I do understand that the federal properties, as well as the Arizona State Land and Trust approve. Is the Arizona State Land and Trust, are they, do they have to approve our Section 10 mitigation lands changes as well?
Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Miller, the state land, or the state trust and the state land department are not part of the Section 10 permit. They chose to opt out early in the process, so the only approving authority is the federal government through the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service.
Okay, so the Arizona State Land and Trust simply reviewed the district conservation lands, as well as the ones that the county?
Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Miller, I may have misunderstood your question. Yes, there's a nonprofit that we partner with, the Arizona Land and Water Trust, and yes, they've reviewed and approved.
Right. Okay, so they review all of this. I wasn't, I wasn't real clear on how that worked with the state on these ones that were preserved for mitigation purposes for the Section 10. So, they approve all of them? They participate in this? Okay, so we are allowed periodically to go in and remove or apply new covenants and change out the land? So, I wasn't real clear on how that process works. Is this defined anywhere that the general public wanted to go see? I assume there is a process that is enumerated somewhere in the county code?
Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Miller, yes, there's a large enabling document that basically explains the process and what's added and what's subtracted, and the ability to make those changes periodically, to conform to conditions as they may change in the future.
And is that on the flood districts page, website?
Mr. Chairman and Supervisor-
Is that posted?
-Miller, I don't know we can make sure that it is. I haven't looked at it in a long time. So, periodically, we update and refresh our web pages, and some of the original actions on this took place in, I believe, October of 2016. So, we can take a look and make sure it's there.
Okay, thank you.
All right, there's a motion before us to approve item number six. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Ayes have it. Library District Board, item number seven, contract?
I'll move the item.
Second.
Motion, second, to approve item number seven. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Ayes have it. Sitting as the Board of Supervisors, are there any points in the consent calendar that we would like to state separately?
I'd-
Supervisor Viegas?
I'd like to take out number six, not because I'm not going to vote for it, but because I have a recommendation.
All right, any other ones? If not, shall I move the remainder of consent in its entirety?
Second.
Motion, second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Ayes have it. Supervisor Viegas, item number six on the addendum.
Yes, I would like to recommend to our health department and to Maximus whether they can use a local number that shows up on the caller ID when they're calling people. Because I've been talking to different people that were contacted, and they didn't pick up the phone because it's an 833 number. And I think that discourages people from participating. And so, my recommendation is to look into whether or not you can use a number that's, that comes up as Pima County Health Department, so that people will under, will know that, you know, that it's somebody from the health department calling them, probably because they've been exposed. That's my recommendation.
And I thank Supervisor Viegas for that. I had the same concern, have been getting calls. People just don't, they're concerned about a number that they, they think it's a spam call.
Yep, exactly.
So, thank you for those comments. And I don't know if there's a motion on the floor, but I will move that item with the suggestion with, from Supervisor Viegas.
I will take the suggestion, the staff direction, and adopt that as part of the motion.
Correct.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Supervisor Miller, did you have something to add?
She said aye.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, I just said aye. Sorry.
All right, a motion carries. Moving on to County Administrator, item number nine, medical and dental insurance for county employees. Mr. O'Gallagher.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, once a year, you approve our contracts and the ability of the various plans that we have and the rates that are needed to maintain the healthcare benefits trust in a positive position. This is the time in which you would set the health insurance premiums and rates. We have had an increase in utilization, requiring an increase in rates of about 11.48 percent. And what I'm recommending is that those rates be increased, that the county HSA contributions remain the same as they are in the current year. And that's $2,000 for employees, spouse, employee, spouse and family, and $1,000 for employee only. That's contributed by the county into the employee's account for the high deductible health plan. That the dental rates remain the same for both plans in the current year. And we continue to provide the incentives of up to $35 per pay period to reduce the premiums that county employees will pay. The net result of the increase is that an employee may see a $4 and, I think, 37 cents increase in their rate or their pay stub bi-weekly in the deduction, or as much as $7.77. So, that's my recommendation and report.
Any discussion? Hearing none. What's the will of the Board?
I'll move the item. I'll second.
Motion, second, to approve item number nine. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Ayes have it. Clerk of the Board, item number 10 and 11.
Move those two items. These are petitions for relief of taxes and property tax exemption waiver.
I'll second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Ayes have it. Community and workforce development, item number 12.
Move the item.
Second.
Motion, second, to approve item number 12. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Ayes have it. Development Services, item number 13.
I'll move the item.
Second.
Motion, second, to approve item number 13. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Ayes have it. Finance and risk management, item number 14.
Move the item. Second.
Motion, second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Ayes have it. Human resources, item 15 and 16.
I'll move, I'll move those items.
I'll second.
Motion, second, to approve item number 15 and 16. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Ayes have it. Moving on to item number 17, that was attached or connected to the item under Flood Control District Board.
I'll move the item. Second.
Motion, second, to approve item number 17. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Ayes have it. Regional wastewater reclamation pre-treatment settlement agreement.
Move the item. Second.
Motion, second, to approve item number 18. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Ayes have it. Now, moving on to hearings, franchises, licenses and permits. I have number, item, Supervisor Christie.
I'd like to, unless there's someone wishing to speak-
There is.
-on this-
There is.
Oh, and I believe he's the petitioner, though.
Okay. If he wishes to speak, then I would certainly allow for that.
Mr. Curtis, are you on the line, and do you wish to speak?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. I'm here seeking approval of a Series 12 liquor license for our restaurant. It's called the Barnyard Craft House and Eatery, and it's at 11011 East Tanker Verde Road. Thank you.
All right, Supervisor Christie.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no one else wishing to speak on this item, I'd like to close public hearing and move that the liquor license for the Barnyard Craft House and Eatery, 11011 East Tanker Verde Road, be granted a Series 12 license and to move forward with this agenda item.
Second.
Motion, second. Motion, second, to close the public hearing and approve item number 19. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Ayes have it. Development Services, item number 20. Staff report.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, before you is a request for a substantial change to modify rezoning conditions to essentially allow a cell tower in property that has already zoned CB2. If not for rezoning conditions associated with the CB2 rezoning on this property, this cell tower would be permitted by right for the zoning code in the CB2 zone. So, just to reiterate, it's because there were already existing rezoning conditions on the site that is triggering the need for this request. Planning and zoning commission recommends approval subject to modified standards and special conditions. There was a nine zero vote. The property is outside the Maylene Marie Behan Conservation Land System. Staff is also recommending approval because the request, again, is in a very appropriate zone. The location is somewhat internal to the site and situated where the tower will be at least 100 feet away from the nearest home. The applicant has indicated a gap in coverage, and the tower will be constructed in a co-locatable manner. In other words, it could have the impact of reducing the need for additional towers in the area in the future if other providers need one. And that concludes staff's report.
We do have the petitioner on the line, if there are any questions.
Any questions? Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. My name is Declan Murphy, representing T-Mobile Towercom. My address is 2166 East University Drive in Timpe, Arizona. I really don't have anything to add to staff's presentation, other than to say that the owner of the subject property, Mr. Swindell, has kept his neighbors informed about the project throughout, and we have not received any negative feedback from any of the neighbors to date. And also, the proposed site will be disguised as a broadleaf tree, so, and also, as noted, will be capable of accompanying additional carriers if necessary. So, we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Mr.-
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, neglected to inform the Board during the presentation that we did receive a neighbor protest. It is on the record with the clerk of the Board on the agenda. So, we did receive one neighbor protest on this request.
All right. What's the will of the Board on item number 20?
I'll move the item.
And close the public hearing?
And close the public hearing. Thank you.
Subject said to modify the standard and special conditions that has recommended by staff and the commission?
Yes. Thank you.
Second. The motion before us is approval of closing the public hearing and approving item number 20, subject to modified and special conditions, as recommended by the PMZ and staff. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Ayes have it. Item 21 was withdrawn, so we'll move to item number 22.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no one in the audience who wished to address us in opposition to this, I am going to move to close the public hearing and move Resolution 2020-97, CO998, 28, Hall-Sandario Road, number two, rezoning.
So, the motion before us is on closing the public hearing and approving item number 22. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Ayes have it. Environmental quality, item number 23, and ordinance number 2020-43.
Mr. Chairman, this is a hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address us on this code text amendment?
I do not have any questions.
Okay, if not, then I'm going to move to close the public hearing and approve item 23 and ordinance number 2020-43 relating to air quality and amending Title 17, Chapter 17.14, Section 17.14080, and 17.14090.
I'll second.
Motion, second, closing the public hearing and approving item number 23 and ordinance number 2020-43. Any discussion?
Yes, I do have a question.
Supervisor Viegas.
The, I noticed that the commercial burning is not capped, and it, they can, commercial can, they're going to be charged $100 from my understanding, and they can burn as much as they want. Is that a wise decision? What went into that decision when residential has a cap, but commercial doesn't?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Viegas, it's the frequency of the applications that we're seeing. So, looking historically, the residential applications are by far the larger volume that we receive. There is a limitation in that. The permit will expire based on the date on the application. So, if it's for a shorter period of time, it would be defined as that specific duration. And then it says in no case shall the timeframe exceed 90 days, and if it were, there would not be a limitation on the number of days. So, these are specific applications that come in indicating what it is that's being burned, the dates that are proposed to burn, and that gives staff the opportunity to then perform inspections as that activity is occurring. So, it's not, it's not a guarantee that each and every commercial permit would be issued for a duration of 90 days.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Ayes have it. I see our county recorder has arrived, so I'm going to go ahead and move to the addendum agenda, item number six, under County Administrator, Mr. O'Gallagher.
Mr. Chairman, we have written a fairly long memorandum explaining the virtues of our county recorder, who is now retiring, F. Ann Rodriguez. And we believe that since she spent a great deal of her career in what she used to call, I think, the Pink Palace, which is now the historic courthouse, that it's only fitting that the Board consider naming the Historic Fountain, you know, within the historic courthouse after F. Ann Rodriguez in honor of her years and years of service.
So, move.
Second, and want to thank the Honorable F. Ann Rodriguez for her service. During her tenure, we had not, we had not one incident of mismanagement. In fact, she improved the quality of the recorder's office, and she improved how people can access it. So, I want to thank her for her service and note that I, we will very much miss her, her professionalism, and wish her Godspeed as she takes the next journey and wherever that may take her.
Ann, you know, I first met you back in 1988, a few years ago, and both of us actually prepared this step off the public stage. You know, you've been a fixture in this community, a fixture as our county recorder, and as Sharon said, you have managed it well. We haven't always agreed, but that's okay. That's part of the process. And you have, you have conducted yourself with honor, with respect, and you've always upheld the integrity of our elections and our county. So, thank you.
Does she wish, does the-
Well, let me, why don't we go ahead and move it so she can talk about it?
Okay, I'll move, I'll move.
And we got a second.
Okay, yep, okay.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. By unanimous vote, Ms. Rodriguez, please come up, and you have the floor. Or the fountain, shall I say?
Good morning, members. You know, it is quite an honor that you're dedicating the fountain, and I thank you, Mr. Huckleberry, for bringing it forward. I was born and raised here, born at St. Mary's Hospital. So, as a child coming downtown, where we did all our major shopping, I would go by that old, I call it lovingly and dearly, the old Pink Palace. I refer to it as a child as the historic building because courthouse, because everything was conducted there, the jail was there, everything was in that building. That was before any of these other buildings were built. So, I had the honor and pleasure, when I got elected, to actually be housed in something as I admired as a child, so it's very meaningful for me. And I remember Mike Toonstra, he was the old facilities manager. I'd always get after him. I said, oh, I says, when are you going to wash this old girl? When are you going to paint her? You know, when I found the termites. You know, when the decision was made that I was going to move to the new building, I thought I would retire there. But I had the privilege of being housed in that building, and it's a beautiful restoration. It's a beautiful job. I've seen it. I preserve some historical things that will be transferred over there, and some things that will be going to the Historical Society. So, it was, it's quite an honor that you're doing this for me, and I will remember, and it's really touched my, it touched my heart. With that, I'd also like to say, if you don't mind me indulging, that this last election was so challenging in so many different ways for my department and also for the Elections Department. We were short-staffed, but I really would like to thank is the public. The public, when we called and said we needed help, the ballot patrol, we had people coming in, training, the drop-off ballot things, it worked. We had to have more people in. They came from all walks of life. I didn't even know, know they were that, so that Pima County could have a successful election. The staff that I had wanted to make sure that I went out on this election on a high, not having any problems. And so, I owe a true dedication to all my permanent staff and intermittent staff that helped me carry it through. With that said, in the audience is, is also with me is Chris Rhodes, who's been my chief deputy and been with me for 20 years.
Oh, there he is.
He came over from the county attorney's office, and I lured him. And we've kind of like been partners in this. I could not have done this all without him and the rest of my administrative team, which was Kim Challenger and Payne Franklin, to, to make this machine work as it was an operational machine. I leave it in good hands with the staff. staff, working in the translation, transition, I said, because I want to make sure that things run smooth for my staff and for the public. So I have prepared everything that I can only did. So it's been, the last thing I want to thank is also the public who gave me the honor and privilege by electing me so many times to serve as their Pima County Recorder, that they entrusted me in their voting. They're, everyone seems to forget the Recording Division side, which is a revenue-based side, right Chuck? He's always asking me about the revenue side, which is very important. It's very important that they entrusted me in to continue in this. I've actually, everyone's focusing on the seven presidential elections. I actually conducted almost 280 elections since I've been in office.
Wow.
So the, from 1992, when I was elected and took off, that was when President Bill Clinton, the technology changed, the way, the method of people voting, the things, we try to communicate that with the, with the public. So, so I wanted just to bring that one to attention. So we'll have some other things that we'll be bringing, not forward, but we'll be presenting in, in the office. Like I've now hung all the pictures of all the recorders since territorial days are up.
Wow.
And the original map of where we're at, the Presidio map, some of those things will be going over to the museum so that we can preserve our history here in Pima County. But most, but I do thank you for the honor and privilege of naming the fountain in the old pink palace, which is now the old historic building. And everybody knows me and knows I refer her to as the old pink, because it looked pink. It was pink. It's not pink anymore, but it just kind of stayed with, stayed with me. So thank you very much. I know you have a very long agenda and very tough issues to handle on dealing with COVID. And I will say, we had no major issues at any of our early voting sites.
Wow.
The public followed the rules and participated. So, you know, we could, we could handle this election in the way we did. But I thank you very much.
No, we thank you for your service. And I'm wondering, Mr. Huckleberry, if we could get someone from Communications and we get a photo with Chris and F. Ann and, I mean, I have to socially distance, but would very much like to see if we can get a photograph with all of us, if that's amenable to you.
That'd be fine. You want to do that now?
Can we, yeah, Jan?
Jan's working on it.
We'll go ahead, and if you could just spend a little time with us, and when the photographer gets here, we'll recess for a few moments.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. All right, Transportation, item number 24, and Ordinance number 2020-44. I move the item.
Second. Where are you?
And close the public, Transportation, item number 24.
What, we're on the addendum?
We're on the regular agenda now.
Okay, we're back to the regular.
I forgot. Usually the addendum doesn't have 24 minutes. I apologize. Regular Agenda, item number 24, hearing, traffic ordinance, ordinance number 2020-44. So I move to close the public hearing and approve item number 24, Ordinance number 2020-44.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Eyes have it. Now we're going to the first addendum agenda, and we'll move to Board Supervisors sitting as other boards, Rockin' K, South Community, Facilities, District Board. Mr. Huckleberry, do we actually have to take the vote for them?
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, this is the second time that this has come before you, maybe, hopefully the third time is a charm. The first time, the electors forgot to vote. This time, we forgot to advertise. So it's one and one, and both of them have been basically corrected, and this is again authorizing the election. We will remind the electors to vote, and it has been and will be properly advertised.
All right, so I will move item number three and Resolution number 2020 RK5.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Eyes have it. Sitting as Board Supervisors, Board Supervisors, number four, Supervisor Bronson.
Mr. Chairman, I put this item on the agenda because we've been contacted, as I'm sure your offices and the Office of Supervisor Christie have, regarding the naming of the Sarita Library. In the middle of COVID, I'm not sure we've had the public input that would be appropriate. So I would hope that we could ask our library to begin to, again, engage the folks who will be using the library and perhaps getting some recommendations from them in terms of how they want the library name, since they will be the users. And Mr. Huckleberry, you have anything you want to add to that? I don't, yeah, all I'm doing is direction to the staff to, again, reach out to constituents who are going to be affected and get their recommendations.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Bronson, I think we probably have about three months before we have to order the signs and install them, so I think we have sufficient time. And we can ask the Library Advisory Board as well as the, our library director to begin a process to take names for nomination and consideration, and let the Library Advisory Board define a process that they want to use. They typically will, will then ask for public input, and then ultimately, before the building is completed, we'll need to name the library if it's going to carry a name other than the Sarita Library.
Thank you. So that's by way of direction to staff. Does I, I don't think that has to be the form of the motion, do you? Okay. So I think we have an understanding then. Okay.
All right, so it looks like our comm staff have arrived, so we will recess for a few minutes, and we will return to the sound of the ghetto.
I do have an old bench in Spenceman Building, but nobody knows who made it. It was made in 1982.
Meeting is called back to order. We are on item number five, Telecommuting and Virtual Meeting Policies. Supervisor Viegas.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Valdez. I put this on the agenda because I had received several emails and calls, actually, to talk about employees who were having some really issues with being at work with the transmission so high. And I thought it was a good time for us to discuss what it is that we should do because the transmission rates are high and they continue to be high. And we're telling, you know, as many people as we can to stay home. If you can work from home, you know, we're advising people to stay home. And so I thought it was a good time for us to think about our, our employees and figure out the best and safe way for them to still have their jobs, still get a paycheck, but be as safe as possible. And I know that Mr. Huckleberry has prepared some reports, and I have read those reports, and I, I'm sure that he wants to explain them, so I'll let him explain them, and then we can continue to have the discussion in which direction to go. The, I added the virtual meeting because this is my last meeting for one, I think, unless we have an emergency meeting before the end of the year. But I just wanted to say that it, it's been challenging being here, but for me, I've, I have felt pretty safe until recently with, you know, I don't go anywhere anymore unless it's here. But I was just going to recommend for the future, for, for those of you that are staying on, for us to look at, or for you all to look at, the possibility of virtual meetings and which would be the best way to handle them, what, what platform would be the best one. I see, you know, I listened to the City of Tucson meetings. They seem to go pretty well. I think the biggest issue that I have is that we can't have call to the public virtually, and so that, you know, prevents a lot of people from, from speaking out. And sometimes it's really hard to hear, you know, it's the muffled noise. And if we were all virtual, or if you were all virtual, it might be clearer for people. During this time, I don't think it should, it should last longer than it has to, but that's just a recommendation for the virtual, why I included the virtual meeting policies in there as well.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Viegas, you mentioned that City of Tucson doesn't have call to the public during, when they, when they're in the virtual mode. Now I would then direct a question, and I like the idea of going virtual, provided our IT staff, we have sufficient resources. But in terms of call to the public, is there a legal issue with not having call to the public or, and you don't have to answer it now. I'm putting you on the spot. Just, I would be appreciative if you could research that. I, I thought we had to, by statute, have a call to the public, but perhaps I am mistaken.
If I may add to that issue, part of, I think, and Andy, you can correct me and jump in if you'd like. Part of the issue is because we were under an emergency declaration at the time, we were able to not necessarily have a call to the public, but it was something that was fundamental to what I believed was a public meeting. So when I became chairman, I shortly thereafter reinstituted the live meetings with the call to the audience because of my belief that the public should always be able to either attend or comment on the business of the public. But I believe that under the emergency declaration that we were under earlier, as well as an emergency special session does not legally require. Is that correct, Andy? Or counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and also Supervisor Bronson. The statute that sets call to the public does make it optional for the, for the public body to either have a call to the public or not. Obviously, there are items for which there is a right to a hearing or to speak independent of the call to the public statute. So, but obviously, there's a, you know, as, as you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, a policy decision to make with respect to how important it is for the board to hear from the public and a call to the public. But from a legal standpoint, it is optional whether or not to have that specific segment in the meeting.
Thank you for the clarification.
Any further discussion?
I, I don't know if this is the proper time to hear from Mr. Huckleberry regarding the telework and the plan. I think that's part of this discussion, and I know that's on addendum two, so I'm not sure what the, if we need to.
Mr. Huckleberry, would you rather have that discussion there, and obviously we can take action under that item, or would you like to have it here?
With regard to virtual meeting?
Virtual meeting and telecommuting, right?
Telecommuting.
And tele-
Yeah, telecommuting is fine. Let's, let's have it here.
Okay.
Because I think it's, it, it sets the stage for where we're, where we're going, I believe.
Please proceed then.
I sent a note yesterday and to the board, and we've been working on what we call a stay-at-home plan for employees for about 10 days now. And it's one of those things that's fairly, you know, hard to do. We've asked each individual department to provide a plan because we can't close a lot of offices. By statute, we have to stay open. We have to continue to provide services and businesses. It's how we can do that is, is, is the, is the trick. Some of that can be accomplished by telework. And if we look at our past telework and what we've been doing in telework, it's been about 50% of the employees involved in that are in the legal system. And in that legal system, it's fairly easy to continue to do telework, so I don't think that's an issue. Where we, where we basically have difficulty is associating with direct delivery of services. A sheriff's deputy is an example, or a correction officer, or a transportation worker, or a wastewater worker, or even our own payroll staff. You know, we can't, we have to continue to meet the payroll needs of the county employees. So we will have to have some employees in the facility. What we've done with the stay-at-home plan, which is, I think, you know, it kind of is, is working into the teleworking process, is talk about trying to implement it starting December 21st through basically January, I believe, the 9th or 10th, which is a three-week period. And what we find typically is during the season with Christmas and New Year's, we have a lot of employees taking leave anyway. And so I think we're, we're, and the goal is to depopulate the buildings, to get employees, you know, the few that have to be there. And in the case of, say, field workers, obviously, we have to, to patch potholes during this period. But do we have to have seven crews? Can we do it with four crews? And so those are the individual decisions being made by the departments that are then reviewed and approved by the, the appropriate Deputy County Administrator. We also are cognizant that if you aren't at work, you have to take some type of leave. And there are some employees who have lots of leave, and there are others who have little. And so what we've also told department directors to do is to, if you have two employees that can do the same job, one has a lot of leave and one has very little leave, let's encourage the one with a lot of leave to be the one to take this period off as, and use their leave banks. So these plans are due at 5:00 tonight, and we'll be implementing them on Monday. And obviously, teleworking works into it. Teleworking will continue to be provided. It just simply is that there are certain tasks and jobs that can't be provided by telework, and we just need to recognize that. And I think the other issue is we can't artificially close buildings simply because state law requires our buildings to basically be open and available for service. We can do that service, and we probably will, by appointment, by basically meeting the person there and escorting them in. So we will be taking additional protective measures in this process. So I think that's, you know, our report. And again, as these plans are starting to come in, we've looked at several of them. The library one looks pretty good. And so I think we'll basically be able to accomplish depopulating facilities and simply for about a three-week period, give you an example of a, of a library plan. They're really talking about closing all the libraries except one, having a group of employees provide, again, the services that they can do remotely or do over the phone. So there are not many people at all in the library buildings itself. And we have about, I think it's 14, 15, 13, 30? Yeah.
14.
14. Let me let Deputy Lesher talk.
Yeah, your sign language, I'm not quite getting.
Yeah, we have a number that are providing food supplemental services, meaning that we also have the food bank connected to the library providing food. So those will be, you know, continue to be operated. And as they do food, we're thinking that maybe those libraries that where there's food distribution, they could also do curbside service. So... So, Ms. Lesher, anything more to?
What was the number you were trying to tell us?
Mr. Chairman, that was 1, 3 for 13. But from your side, it probably looked like 31, I'm guessing.
So I have a question.
Sure, it's with you.
I, thank you, Chairman, all of this. Mr. Huckleberry, with this plan, well, let me, I have a couple of questions, but with the food, the food distribution, I saw in the newspaper that the food bank is closing for the holidays. Is there any way that our employees could maybe step in because they're trying to give their volunteers a break? Is there any way that, because people are going to need food during that time and that that's concerning? Is there a plan?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Vegas, I think I had this Lesher talk to the food bank this morning because we saw the same thing, and we're a little concerned with the 13 sites we have. And so let me let her.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Vegas, I have not yet had a chance to speak with the food bank, but saw the same article, and that's why we immediately began to work with the library to see if we could keep the 13 sites open at the libraries to then fill in that gap between that what looks like Christmas to New Year's, which I think is a significant time. I understand the burden that's been placed on the food bank, but it's a good time for us to look at picking that up. We're also looking, for example, of, excuse me, whether or not the individuals who've been working at the library could assist with contact tracing, things of that nature. How can we plug them into other vital services at this time?
Right. I I think that that would be really good for employees in the plan for appointing authorities to look at whether if if there's not enough, if I don't want anybody to have to take leave, especially during this time, without pay. So I don't want to look, you know, without knowing that, you know, when I look at your the plan, that's a real concern to me in trying to approve, if you're asking us to approve that plan, not knowing whether that is going to create someone to go without pay during this time when we know that the health department needs help, we know that, you know, now our food bank needs help. I think we can, we can make it work where no one should have to go without pay.
Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Vegas, that's exactly our goal as well. So, Ms. Lesher.
Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Vegas, just as an example, out of the first 14 plans that I've reviewed, it ends up with about 275 employees continuing to work and about 250 out on some sort of leave. So what we're accomplishing is significantly limiting the number of people within the building, coming into the building, but also provides through pandemic, vacation, sick leave, time to move out. We do have some that may, particularly in the library, which was one of our areas where we had furloughs before, that we're looking to connect them with other critical services such as the contact tracing, food bank services, et cetera.
So is that is that a guarantee that nobody will leave without or nobody will be without pay?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Vegas, it's a guarantee that we will do everything in our efforts to not have that happen. And so the issue is, is can I guarantee one person will not be available to either do food bank or contact tracing or any other service? I can't tell you until we get all the way through all of these, but the goal is is to have no one go without paycheck.
Supervisor Vegas?
Yeah, I'm just, I, when I read the plan, I don't, I don't, I'm not comfortable, and now we're not, we're kind of going to the plan and not the telework. But if the plan is a separate item that we're going to vote on today, I would, I would want to have some more concrete language in there about making sure that that, you know, people have the, you know, the choice of working elsewhere so that they don't lose a paycheck during this time, if possible. And also that, and then going back to the telework, I think that there are, I would hope that the appointing authorities look at those options as well, that their supervisors look at, you know, sometimes I'm, I've been thinking about different, different types of of work out there where things can be done at home, even from the perspective of, you know, and we do a lot of it already with with our housing, you know, I mean, people are not coming in, everything's being done by phone anyway. And then when they do have to come to bring items, paperwork, if they don't have a computer or something, you know, those are things that there will be a few people there to take those items. So and I'm sure that in every department, there are jobs that can be done through telework. I think the other issue that that you brought up, Mr. Huckleberry, is the lack of broadband, the lack of 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 Internet in in some of our employees. You know, I think that could be, that could be an issue, and if there is anything that we can do from our end to make that easier for people, I know that we do have, we have, you know, our IT department, so that and possibly there are computers out there that, you know, that we can provide. But again, if they don't have the broadband, that could be an issue, and I understand that. So I'm, I'm just, I just want to make sure, you know, and I don't know how, what the plans look like, you probably haven't had a real, a chance to really look at them yet, the ones that you've you've received. So I would, I would want to make sure that the appointing authority or the supervisor, whoever is preparing this plan, has a, you know, a good concept of what can be done at home and what can't be done at home, you know, by someone, by an employee in the, you know, from their, from their perspective.
Ms. Huckleberry?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, what we will do is, you know, summarize these plans and probably get just a summary to the board and, you know, answer the basic question that you asked, you know, before it takes effect on Monday. And we'll just, you know, to show you how complicated this can get, if I mentioned earlier, 50% of our teleworkers are, you know, mostly attorneys, either county attorneys or public defenders or support staff for those. And I had a conversation, the presiding judge called me yesterday, and his comments to me were, he may actually also do something very similar in the courts. So now if we significantly reduce what happens in the courts, what happens to those teleworkers that are, you know, basically dominant in supporting the court system? So that's the, that's the kind of complications that we get into.
You're talking about evictions?
No, no, it's just the Superior Court, you know, and and so there's a, you know, public defender and prosecutor assigned to all cases. Then all of a sudden, if they have no trials, no motions, no this, no that, now what, now what happens? So there's the complicating factor.
Why is that, excuse me, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, why is that complicating? I mean, what is complicated about it? I'm trying to understand.
Yes.
I mean, if there are no cases to be heard, then that's a good thing, isn't it? At least at the moment, since we are encouraging telecommuting, or I hope we are going to be encouraging in a greater degree. So I'm not sure what, how, perhaps you can enlighten me what you mean by complication.
Sure.
Ms. Huckleberry?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Bronson, the complicating factor is if I have prosecutors and defenders telecommuting and basically inputting into illegal proceedings that's no longer existing, now what are they doing?
Well, whether they're here or telecommuting, they're doing nothing because there are no cases. So I'm not, again, I don't see your point. I mean, if there are, you want to fire them?
The point is, is that I don't know what they're going to be doing.
I'm sure they have a lot of paperwork to do. They all have way over the amount of cases, I would think that.
And that's not their fault.
Yeah.
If there are nothing, if there's nothing to prosecute, nothing to defend because there's no action in court, I, I don't, you know, I, if you're talking about productivity, whether they're here or they're working telecommuting, they're not going to be productive because there is no, there are no cases, so.
Mr. Yeah, Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Bronson, then those can, who have nothing, nothing to work on telecommuting can use their leave.
I don't think that's fair.
Or, Mr. Huckleberry, like all the other employees, are they eligible to work on the services that you discussed before?
Mr. Chairman, the employees that are basically directly delivering services are not.
Okay.
I'm really not comfortable with any of this.
Yeah, I don't.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Miller?
Um, it sounds like we're going to have a a lot less need for employees as we reduce services in Mr. Huckleberry's memo, he talks about we won't have the transportation needs, et cetera, that we need. And it sounds like, you know, we're going to have to consider the fact that we're going to have have a need for fewer employees. Has that been addressed and has anybody thought about that?
But it's, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Miller, but it's fewer employees during the time of COVID when we get back to business as usual, if we get back to business as usual. I mean, why are we penalizing employees who through no fault of their own have no caseloads? I just.
Well, I guess as I look at it, it is the same thing for these private businesses that we're, we're going to impose a shutdown on. It's no fault of their own, it's no fault of their employees that they've been hit and told to shut down without any consideration. And I think that's on the agenda today. We're doing it to them. We've got to look at ourselves because without the tax base, without these people working, we're going to have less dollars, and we want to keep things all the same and keep our employees employed and and keep paying them, but we're expecting the business community, all these small businesses, they can't afford to pay their employees, so they have to do layoffs. Well, if they have to do layoffs, we're going to collect fewer tax dollars. And if we're collecting fewer tax dollars, we're not being realistic if we're not considering this with this memorandum is talking about a serious shutdown. I'd like someone to address that and and let us know what is the plan and how do we support our own employees, keeping them employed, doing nothing while we're forcing others to lay people off because they don't have the luxury of just increasing taxes or collecting taxes and paying salaries. They're stuck with the revenues that they get from their business, and we're talking about shutting them down. That's the hypocrisy in all of this.
Other comments?
Well, I'm.
I would like the county administrator or someone to address that, please. I didn't just say that for the sake of saying it. If I'm wrong, please explain where I'm wrong and how we're going to do this and how we're going to also make sure that the business community can still afford and and our residential community can still afford to pay the taxes to keep people employed, doing nothing.
Ms. Huckleberry?
Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Miller, I assume you're speaking of the issue of mandatory curfew, which would go into effect at 10:00 PM. And the primary impact would be on those businesses that are essentially restaurants slash bars, predominantly bars in the evening. And there are probably, if you look at the number of establishments, less than 15% of the total base. So you're restricting typically about three to four hours, depending on the, when the bar closes versus, and so that is the, is shortening the time period. That's what the process of curfew will do.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Miller?
But we're also restricting businesses from functioning at full capacity during normal hours. And according to this memo, it says this, when you said effective at midnight, that's midnight on the 21st, according to the memo, is that correct? But we're also restricting the ability for business operators to function as normal all day long during normal hours. We're restricting the size of events and all of that kind of thing. So I think we, realistically, we have to look at this. We can't pretend that there's nothing going on in the private sector that does not impact Pima County because those are the people paying the salaries of the county employees. It's that tax base, and that tax base is shrinking, and I suspect it's going to shrink even more because of these restrictions and these shutdowns. People can't stay in business. And Pima County is a service oriented economy and always has been for a very long time. And that impacts us far worse than a manufacturing based economy such as Maricopa County has. So I think we need to look at the realistic impacts on our economy versus other economies that aren't so focused on service industry.
Ms. Huckleberry?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I think the issue that is important is that the county has not placed a restriction on the occupancy of residential, of restaurants. That's the governor's proclamation.
I think there's.
Mr. Chair? Hang on, did you have something, Supervisor Vegas? And then Supervisor Christie?
Yes, thank you, Supervisor or Chairman, all of this. What I can say to Supervisor Miller is that I, the reason that we're, what we're trying to accomplish is transmission. This virus is real, and by having businesses open, that, and we're allowing businesses to stay open, maybe at a different capacity, and but it's still about the transmission of this virus. In order to keep people alive, we need to make sure that we're doing all we can from our employees all the way to the corporations who unfortunately, you know, we're in this bind. This isn't, this isn't something that any of us want, but this is what we've been handed. And we have to look at this from the perspective of life and death and long term effects from this virus. So I don't think that that comparing the two, you know, having business as usual makes any sense if we're trying to to stop the spread of this virus, for one. What we're trying to do to employees that are public servants, we're trying to keep them from, I mean, we had, how many, how many people were contracted the virus, county employees? I know I saw that somewhere.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Vegas, this last week it was 60 employees, the previous week it was 38 in total. Since March, I think it was 353.
That's a lot of employees for Pima County. We, I mean, when I first came on, it was pretty low. So we have a problem. We have an issue that we have to address. And to, and we have a, are an obligation to protect our employees.
Mr. Chairman?
If if you're to that point, Supervisor Miller, but Supervisor Christie's next otherwise, Supervisor Miller? Is it to that point?
It is, it is to that point, and I was the one who was speaking, and then Supervisor Vegas was allowed to interrupt, so I'd like to respond to that. That doesn't address my question. Nobody is questioning that the virus is real or not real. What I was speaking about is the fact that we're going to have a lot of employees who are doing nothing, as that was discussed earlier, and they're going to have to, and we're going to have to make a decision. Do they continue getting paid or do they, or do we have to downsize our staff? And just like the private sector is having to do, their employees are impacted too. This isn't just affecting county employees. And you distinguish them as public sector as if a public sector employee is more valuable than a private sector employee, which I find very disturbing. which I find very disturbing. They're all valuable, all of these employees. We don't want anyone to get sick. However, we have to look at the reality that as the private sector is forced to shut down, whether through diminished capacity or through just shutting down after a certain time of day, we're going to have less revenues to be able to support the staff that we currently have. And we're not being realistic if we don't look at that and address it. And I hope that someone is looking at that so that we do address it. I just wanted to make that point. It's nothing about who gets sick, who doesn't get sick. No one wants anyone to get sick. But end of the day, we have to weigh, we have to weigh the trade-offs here, and we have to evaluate those. Thank you.
Now, to that point, let me go ahead and try and clarify a little bit. What we were talking about in terms of the nonessential employees earlier is that in the discussion that we've been having with Mr. Huckleberry and Ms. Lesher, is that a non, an employee who doesn't have any role to play or in their normal practice of their employment does have the ability to then go and provide one of the services. Part of, I think, where we went a little bit off track is because part of the discussion went to if Superior Court then closes down or minimizes its operations, it now affects the lawyers and ancillary staff at both the county attorney and the public defender's office. So if we, if those lawyers are willing, if they don't have anything to do to then work in the service-oriented abilities that we're proposing for other employees, then they could get paid as well. Ms. Huckleberry?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that's essentially correct. And I think, you know, I may have started this by talking about the courts. But I think, you know, these employees are budgeted full-time and throughout the year, so there's no issue now. The issue will come is that as we begin to look at, and I think that was Supervisor Miller, our revenues next year when we structure our budget. If they're substantially less, then yes, we'll have to do something to curtail our operations. We don't know that yet. And the only point I think that I was trying to make is that there are things that are interrelated in our system that where one could have an effect on another, and we just have to understand that. That's all I was trying to point out. And I think you're correct, is that we have a number of employees during this period that traditionally are going to be on leave anyway, because they want to be on leave. We want to encourage those employees to take leave. There are employees, as we begin to depopulate buildings, that might not have enough leave, and we will do our best to place them either in contact tracing or in any other county job, so that they continue to be paid. That is, in summary, what we, that's the goal, and that is what we will accomplish.
Supervisor Christie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm a little bit concerned that we're kind of mixing up some agenda items here. We're talking initially about telecommuting and virtual meeting policies, and I think the curfew issue crept into the discussion, and it needs to be dealt with on a more significant level separately. But to Supervisor Miller's point, there is going to be a reduction in revenues to the county to support employees and services. And it's very important, from a business perspective, and I've had to go through this numerous times over the years, and the county, I'm sure, has to recognize that this situation exists now, that if there are less requirements for employees, i.e. less work for employees to do, then we have to look at reducing the number of employees. It's not rocket science. It's a business rule that when business slows down and seems to be in a situation where it's not going to come back anytime soon, a business has to look internally and try to justify the number of employees. And I'm hoping that the county is doing exactly that. If there is no need, for whatever reason, for employees to be employees, then there is a need to reduce the number of employees. And it has nothing to do, at this point, with telecommuting or any kind of meeting policies or anything of this. It's a matter of proper management of our income versus our expenses. And the largest expense that you have in any kind of organization, be it private or public, is employees. And we need to look at the justification of carrying so many employees when their services are not or no longer required. And I would hope that maybe we can go on to give the county administrator direction to make sure that all aspects of need versus number of employees are being analyzed. And if there is an ability to reduce costs as a result of lost revenue, that those reduced costs are taken. And also, I would like, hopefully, to maybe segregate the discussion to the second addendum on the curfew issue and not to confuse everything that we, seems to be getting confused at this particular point. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Bronson.
I want to thank you for your earlier comments regarding telecommuting and who can and cannot. And to Mr. Huckleberry's point, and I guess I wasn't making myself as clear as I should have been. My concern, I mean, if the courts make it, it's not only the courts, it's not only public defense, it's not only the county attorney, it's the entire criminal justice system that is going to be impacted by this rather immediately, at least what we, what we think. The time period, we're looking at probably three to four months. So I think we need to be a little, I'm really going to use this word, a little judicious and a little more analytical in how it's affecting the whole criminal justice system. Because once we take people offline, and once we get, recover, if we recover from COVID quickly, when, if the vaccine becomes available, we, it's going to be interesting to see how we get the system back up and functional, that whole criminal justice system. That was my point with the issue of telecommuting.
All right, any other comments on this, on this one?
One quick question, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Christie.
Some weeks, some weeks ago, I asked Mr. Huckleberry his thoughts on when restrictions on businesses and other entities might be lifted. And I suggested maybe after the holidays or after the New Year. And I believe Mr. Huckleberry's response was that things would not be removed or lifted, probably to the summer of 2022. Now that there's a vaccine coming out, and it was more apparent in the last couple of days that it is going to be utilized, as opposed, when I first posed the question to Mr. Huckleberry. So, Mr. Huckleberry, what, are you standing by your original prognostication that the impositions on businesses will remain in effect till 2022? Or has the vaccine introduction changed your mind on that?
Ms. Huckleberry.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Christie, I think what I said is it could be as late as 2022, and it could be as early as the summer of '21, if in fact, we can deploy the vaccine sufficiently into the number of individuals within the community to achieve what was the public health officials call herd immunity. And so I think, you know, the earliest is probably sometime in the late spring of '21, and maybe early summer of '21.
Chairman?
All right. Supervisor Viegas, did you have something else? No, I think you...
I think he just flipped off.
I just want to go back to, I think we need to take one item at a time. And for the telework, telecommute, I would like to make a motion that all employees who are technologically able to telecommute should be allowed to do so with permission of their appointing authority. I'm making a motion.
Ms. Huckleberry, how does that differ with, from the current policy?
Mr. Chairman, I don't think it is different.
Well, when I read it, it, there, Chairman, follow this. When I read it, it says that it's, it only applies to people that are 65 and over, have compromised medical conditions, take care of someone with a compromised medical condition, or have school-aged children, which are all good reasons. But I think we need to look even more broader than that. I think we need to look at anybody that can telecommute, that has the ability to telecommute or telework, should be able to do so. And if they have the work, the workload that provides them that opportunity.
You know, on its surface, it sounds decent, but, Ms. Huckleberry, what, who can take advantage of it and who can't?
Mr. Chairman, and I think when you look at the people who are telecommuting, it's even broader than the list. The list is a must-telecommute. The other is, if it's available, they can telecommute. So we have a number of telecommuting that probably aren't even on the list. And I think the folks who can't take advantage of it, obviously, are correction officers, our sheriff's department law enforcement officers, our transportation workers, and our wastewater workers. So it's those, those employees typically aren't going to be eligible or able to telework.
What's your best guess at this point? Excuse me, Mr. Christie, and I'll go ahead and get you afterwards. What's your best guess in terms of the numbers of who can? How does this change the number of people who can telecommute?
Mr. Chairman, and it, right now, we have about, I think, 20%, 10 to 20% of the workforce telecommuting. And I don't think it changes much, because again, it's those who can probably already are. And so I think it's really trying to figure out how do you now? You know, the issue is you have to have, as we said, a piece of equipment. You have to have the internet connection. You have to have all those things that an employee who, and then there has to be a judgment by the department head as to whether the employee can telecommute or not. So those are, at this point, unknowns. But I doubt it's going to change very much at all.
Ms. Christie.
Mr. Chairman, just in addition to being county administrator, Mr. Huckleberry, you're also what I would consider the general manager of the county's workforce. Do you see any changes necessary in the policy? Or do you think that it's covering all of the aspects of it as it is? And it, in your mind, do you, do you feel that it needs revision? Or do you think it's working out in its current manner?
Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Christie, I believe it's adequate now. I believe that in the policy, there's some language that talks about unusual circumstances can be brought to the attention of administration, and we deal with them on a case-by-case basis.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Bronson.
To your point about who's affected with the telecommuting, I think there, it's basically going to be mostly with the white-collar workers, which I think is what you were alluding to. But, you know, and we still have issues with some of the blue-collar workers. But to not try to assist where we can, I think, is, it would be negligent on our part. We'd love to help everybody. And perhaps with the new administration in DC in January, we will get some more CARES Act money or possibly some relief. So again, we're all in a state of limbo, pending much of what is going to be happening in DC that is frankly beyond our control. But what we can control, I think we should try to control. That's...
And to that point, I'm trying to gauge what kind of equality issue we really have and are creating, and that's the concern of my point.
Again, that goes to the point I made with Mr. Huckleberry earlier. And I think you've made a similar point in that we need to do some more analytics to understand how this is affecting us, meaning the Pima County region, not just Pima County government.
Yep.
Supervisor Viegas.
Chairman, follow this. I agree, I think, I think this needs more, I mean, I would, I would like to have all the employees surveyed with the same question, you know, and really see whether or not they feel they can do their job at home, first of all. And if they have the resources, if they have the equipment, if they could do their job at home, you know, would they be able to? Do they have the broadband? Do they have the computer? And all these things. Because I have a feeling that there are a lot of jobs that can be done by telework at home. And my real objective is to try, as I'm sure is with the administration, is to really try to stop the transmission. And the only way to do that is to stop the exposure. And the only way to do that is to have less people in the buildings. And so this is what I'm trying to get at. But at the same time, we know that our health department needs a lot of work, a lot of support. And our community needs a lot of support and a lot of work. So there's options for, for people to be maybe even in an outdoor environment to do things, so that they're not in the building. But as far as the telework, I think that, I honestly believe that there's, that it doesn't just affect the white-collar, that there are blue-collar workers out there that would be willing to telework and are able to telework. But we don't know that if we haven't asked them. And if we haven't asked their supervisors.
All right, any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm just curious. Is there a plan or a policy or an approach that we're supposed to vote on that's before us? Or is this basically just a, pretty much a freewheeling discussion?
It's a discussion, sir.
Well, I do have a motion.
Yeah, but there is a motion on the floor on the telecommuting.
Could you repeat the motion?
So my motion is to, for all Pima County employees who are able to telecommute, should be allowed to do so with permission of their appointing authority.
Anything else, Supervisor Christie?
No, thank you.
All right, is there any further discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Miller.
Didn't we say that is the current policy? Didn't Mr. Huckleberry answer that that is what the current policy is? Is that it is between the employees and their supervisors to determine if they're able to telecommute? I just want to be clear, because my understanding is this is the current policy.
Where I believe in, I'll let, I'll let Mr. Huckleberry answer this as well, but I believe the issue there is that the language is a little different, but the practice is fairly similar. Ms. Huckleberry.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Miller, the policy says you must allow an employee to telework if they meet these conditions. You must. And if an employee can work telecommuting, and this occurred even before we had COVID, they were allowed to telecommute with their department director.
All right, any further discussion? Supervisor Miller?
No, thank you, Mr. Huckleberry.
Supervisor Bronson. Okay. If not, the motion before us is, as Supervisor Viegas just read it, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, please signify by saying nay.
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 By your vote, three to two motion carries. We've been at this for a while without a break. I'm going to go ahead and take a 10-minute break, and we'll return to the sound of the gavel, and we'll move immediately to addendum number two. So we're in recess.